Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council Budget Hearings. My name is Deborah Gross and I chair the Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs. For this hearing, we will hear updates from the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority. First, I'll ask that our Budget Director, Peter McDevitt, give us a brief overview, and then I'll ask the members of the PWSA team to introduce themselves. Mr. McDevitt?
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority is entering a new era, one in which renewed emphasis on public health, the environment, and our responsibility to serve as steadfast stewards of the vital water services our region relies on each day. To ensure we can continue this momentum, we recently embarked on a strategic planning project to redefine our mission, vision, and core values. A quick overview: PWSA has a seven-member board. Councilperson Erica Strausberger serves as the Vice Chair of the Board. The operating budget, PWSA has $1.2 million from the city in indirect costs in the operating budget and for the city's 2024 capital project. There are several joint city PWSA flood control projects in the 2024 budget, including Braywood Way stormwater improvements, Dragoon Way stormwater improvements, Stewart Avenue stormwater improvements, and Haverhill Street improvements.
Thank you, Mr. McDevitt. And now I'll turn it over to the PWSA team. You can introduce yourselves, and do you have a slide presentation as well?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Here it comes. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Will Pickering. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jen Persoudy. I'm the COO and CFO for the organization.
Good afternoon again. Ed Barca, Director of Finance for PWSA.
Good afternoon. Kevin Paulus, Deputy Director of Finance for PWSA.
Yeah, go-- oh, sorry. Yes, please proceed.
Thank you. So Peter touched on it. PWSA, a few years ago, embarked on a strategic planning and mission and vision process, and we're really excited with what we came up with. We have five core values: stewardship, ethics and integrity, accountability, safety, and equity. Each of these five, you know, are multi-layered, but we're really focused on the services we're providing our customers now, but a particular focus on future generations. So the investments that we're making, some that we'll touch on here today, are really going to be serving our children, potentially their children, given how long water and sewer assets can live. And we're really, our vision is to transform our water system and be recognized by our customers as a trusted service provider and a steadfast steward of a vital public asset. So just recognizing the importance of the role we here at the table have today, everyone, the nearly 400 or over 400 employees that we have at PWSA, we're focused on that as we approach our work each and every day. When we talk about the populations we serve, we have a total accounts number of 116,000. So those are not individuals, but those are the buildings and the properties that we serve, either water, sewer, and stormwater, of which there are approximately 81,000 of those customers. Sewer-only customers are customers that live outside of our drinking water service territory, but we provide sewer conveyance services. So we own all of the pipes in the city of Pittsburgh that serve residential and commercial customers that we call sewer conveyance, obviously with the exception of the large sewers that are owned and operated by Alka-San. Stormwater only is a relatively new category of customers, so these are customers that don't have water or sewer accounts or services. However, due to the methodology we use to recuperate our costs for stormwater management, they do receive a stormwater bill and pay a monthly stormwater fee. As I mentioned, we are over 400 employees now. We treat all of our drinking water at what is called the Aspen Wall Water Treatment Plant, but it's located technically in the city of Pittsburgh. I always make a point to clarify that. We produce, on average, about 70 million gallons of treated drinking water per day. The scale of the assets in our service district are pretty awesome when you think about it, nearly 1,000 miles of water lines, 1,200 miles of sewer lines, and then we have all of these other assets like the manholes, our stormwater drains, also known as catch basins, and fire hydrants in the thousands. So these are all of the various pieces of our water, sewer, and stormwater system that we're responsible for and why we need the budget that we're here to discuss today. Here's just a snapshot of our service area. The light blue shaded section, those are our combined customers, so they get drinking water, sewer conveyance, and stormwater services from PWSA. There at the northern tip is the Borough of Millville. PWSA actually owns the drinking water system in Millville. However, drinking water is the only service that we directly bill to them. The neighborhoods in the south and to the far east get their drinking water from another water utility, however, they are our sewer and stormwater customers. So a little bit of a complicated service area within the boundaries of the city of Pittsburgh, but we are the largest drinking water utility within the city of Pittsburgh, and we're actually the largest combined water, sewer, and stormwater utility authority, rather, in the Commonwealth. This year, I'm really happy to present some updates on our water reliability plan. You may recall that these are consent order-driven projects aimed at giving that next generation of life to our water storage and distribution system. So I don't believe we were quite finished with the Highland Two Reservoir and Cover Project, but that did wrap up late last year. That was a massive undertaking there in Highland Park with the Highland Two Reservoir. We also completed what we call the Rising Main Three Rehabilitation Project. So that is a large diameter water pipe that runs from our Brecken Pump Station up to Highland Two to feed that reservoir. Right now, we are putting the finishing touches on Rising Main Number Four Rehabilitation, so that's a redundant pipe to Rising Main Three. So when we're done with Rising Main Three, we switched over to Rising Main Four, and that again is a large diameter water pipe that runs up over Highland Park into the Highland Two Reservoir. This is the covered reservoir in Highland Park. So we now have two rehabilitated large diameter pipes that we believe will get us at least 50 years of lifespan out of them, and that's critical because that Highland Two Reservoir is actually going to substitute for the final step of our treatment process as we replace the clear well, which you can maybe piece together in this infographic that is available on our website, and I would encourage anyone tuning in and members of council and their staff to check that out. We have some neat videos that kind of visualize all these moving pieces. So those were some big accomplishments on the water reliability plan construction this year. We have ongoing design for the other major components, and that is the rehabilitation of the Aspen Wall Pump Station, which is located on the grounds of our treatment plant across the river, the Brecken Pump Station. We are actually going to be constructing a brand-new pump station. And then in Highland Park, I failed to mention, we put the finishing touches on a supply and rising main project that's going to tie into a new pump station there at Melon Terrace. So a lot of activity, Councilwoman, in your council district and in Highland Park due to where our infrastructure is, but we're happy to wrap those projects up. In the next year, we're really going to be focused on building that new pump station there at Melon Terrace. So I'll close out my slides and turn it over to the others after I just remind the council of our focus on environmental compliance and ethics. While it was some time ago, we remain focused on complying with all of our environmental regulations, whether it be from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, EPA, and the various settlements that we have in place with the federal government to ensure that we're an organization doing its best to, again, be a steward of the environment, to be a steward of the assets that we have, and that has required us to build out the environmental compliance and ethics team. So we are becoming more sophisticated as we go. We're focusing not just on drinking water, wastewater permitting, but we also have permitting for our above- and below-ground storage tanks. We have air and industrial stormwater and wastewater permitting, and we're doing everything we can to make sure that we're in full compliance and setting up the organization to be successful. Another key component of that is our ethics program that is really robust. We have learned through sharing our lessons with other utilities that this is a nationally leading program. Our focus on ethics and compliance is one that other utilities are really interested in because of some of the success we have. Just some examples of that are our whistleblower hotline. We have an ethics officer that is available to answer any questions from staff, address concerns either anonymously or in person. We have updated our codes and policies to make sure that we are accounting for things like gifts and making sure that our staff are representing PWSA and the organization and our customers' best interest. There's a lot of training that comes along with that and a compliance manual that is really focused on each of our facilities and what we're doing to ensure compliance if we're not there yet or maintaining compliance at each of those facilities. Our Chief Environmental Compliance and Ethics Officer reports directly to me, so that's something that, you know, really is just an indication of how important we're taking this element of our core values across the organization. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jen to touch on some other slides.
Great, thanks, Will. So our lead service line replacement program is a program that we're very excited and very proud of. Earlier this year, we celebrated the removal of our 10,000th lead line. You'll remember in April of 2019, we added orthophosphate to our treatment process. This is a food-grade additive that we add to our water, and it is an effective method of corrosion control. In July of 2020, our lead levels complied with those EPA action levels. That's 15 parts per billion, and currently, we are well below that as of this year. We continue to replace lead service lines in coordination with water main replacements. So if you have a water main on your street that we need to replace, we are going house to house to ensure that any lead lines that may be connected to that line, that we are working with those customers, to remove those lead lines. We have removed lead service lines through November 13th of this year. So earlier I said 10,000. We're even better than that now. We're at 10,609 public-side lead lines removed and another 7,433 on the private side. We're always looking for ways to fund our programs to the benefit of our customers. One source of funding that we are incredibly grateful for is that the city of Pittsburgh gave a $17 million grant to replace lead service lines in our service territory. We plan to work at about 1,400 locations. Through efficiencies in our work, we are now able to do about 1,700 locations with those funds. This project that is city-funded is over 80% complete, and those funds and that work is expected to be completed in quarter one of 2024. Another source of funding for our lead service line replacement program is PennVest funding. PennVest has been an incredible partner to PWSA. We apply for our water main replacement program that also couples that lead line replacement program with that, and to date, we've been able to receive approximately $237 million. That's in low-interest loans and another $48 million in grants on top of that. In 2024, we are looking to expand our customer assistance programs. We have a number of programs that we're really proud of. On the right-hand side of this slide, you're going to see our PGH2O cares teams. You may have seen them out and about. They attend every community meeting they can get to. They have called our customers, over 6,000 so far, to try to increase enrollment in our programs. And so for 2024, for our bill discount program, we look to increase that reduction on the fixed monthly water and sewer charges of 100%, plus another 85% reduction on the stormwater fee. And the eligible customers, the eligibility for those customers, we look to expand from 150% of the federal poverty level to 200% of the federal poverty level. Hardship Grant, we are also expanding this coming year. The increased annual amounts go from $300 to 450, and this year, we are providing grants not just for water customers, but also for sewer customers as well. We continue our water shut-off moratorium. This is an annual program that ensures that customers maintain their water service during the winter months, and all verified low-income customers are automatically enrolled in that program. We are also looking to increase the current monthly credit that we provide to eligible customers through our flexible payment plans from a $30 credit to a $40 credit, and that helps to reduce past-due balances as long as on-time payments are made through that payment program. And then our lead reimbursement program. Customers may receive up to 100% reimbursement for the costs of replacing the private lead service lines that they have in their home. And for anybody that's listening at home that may need assistance or know somebody that needs assistance, I encourage you to look at our website. That's PGH2O.com, or to please call our PGH2O cares team, and that number here is on the screen. And then finally, we have another new program that I'd like to discuss today. It is our Line Repair and Water Conservation Pilot Program, which is a bit of a mouthful, but it is a pilot program. We have allocated $324,000 to this program. We spend maximum amount of about $1,356 per property, but this program provides free repairs of private-side service line leaks, so that is for exposed plumbing. We also provide assistance with the installation of water-saving devices, whether you have a leaking toilet or a showerhead, as well as conservation education. And this again is for eligible residential, low-income PWSA water customers. This further broadens PWSA's water conservation goals while also lowering the cost of service for eligible customers. Again, our PGH2O cares team, you know, looks at the, you know, abnormal high consumption for some of our customers and is proactive with calling those customers to see if they would be eligible for this program. So it helps to mitigate some of those high bills associated with higher consumption. And again, for anybody listening that is interested in this program, please do visit our website at PGH2O.com, or again, call our PGH2O cares team. They'd be happy to help you. It is at 412-255-2457. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Director of Finance, Ed Barca.
Great, thanks, Jen. Next, before we get into the discussion about our budget for 2024, I did want to briefly discuss the rate structure at PWSA, and specifically for this slide, this is residential customers in our bill discount program. You'll see in green there the 2023 rates. Those are the current rates that are charged to customers, and then in the blue represents 2024 rates. One thing I do want to caveat is that the rates shown in blue are pending a PUC settlement. Those are the preliminary numbers that we believe the PUC will finalize in early 2024. So for the purposes of discussion, we wanted to include them, but do note that it still is pending PUC final approval. As you see there, you know, the list, you know, these are our typical buckets that we call for our customers on the residential side. When you look at a 5/8-inch meter and a different, you know, 1,000-gallon usage you would see per month, and you can see there, it's broken up into 1,000 gallons, 3,000 gallons, and 5,000 gallons. So starting from the top there, the residential customers who are in our bill discount program currently using 1,000 gallons of water are only charged 60 cents per month for stormwater. That goes to Jen's prior point about, you know, PWSA being proactive and really giving that assistance on the water and wastewater side for those vulnerable customers with low usage. And in the blue there in 2024, you will see a $16 increase per month if that settlement is approved by the PUC in 2024. Customers using 3,000 gallons currently pay $44.15 per month for, again, that's the water, wastewater conveyance and stormwater charges. And moving into 2024, that monthly bill would increase to $5.80 per month. And then the bottom there, you'll see customers using 5,000 gallons per month currently pay $87.09. That would increase to $98.37 per month going into 2024. Going on to the next slide, this represents here our typical customer, residential customer. So these are not folks in our bill discount programs, any assistance programs. These are all residential customers outside of those programs, what we call our typical residential customers. And like the prior slide, it's broken down in the same way, showing the 5/8-inch meter usage by 1,000 gallons there. And again, you'll see in green is our 2023 rates, and in blue represents our 2024 rates. So for customers using 1,000 gallons per month, they currently pay $39.51. That will increase to $46.81 in 2024. Customers that use 3,000 gallons per month currently pay $86.43 per month. That would increase to $100.27 per month in 2024. And then customers using 5,000 gallons per month currently pay $129.37. That would increase to $148.69 going into 2024. All right, next, we'll transition into talking about our operating budget for 2024. And so on the prior two slides, obviously, we're showing increases in our rates going into 2024, and the reason for that is really to support our operating budget and capital budget, which we'll talk about here shortly, and the necessary funds we need to continue to operate and maintain our system, but also put in the necessary capital improvements that address the deferred maintenance of the system in whole and really making sure we can provide that quality product to our customers. So for 2024, PWSA's Board of Directors, excuse me, this month approved our operating budget for next year. The total of that was $326 million in whole. Again, that's our 2024 operating budget amount, and that does include Alka-San. PWSA does have a pass-through relationship for Alka-San whereby we bill on their behalf and then remit the amounts we collect to Alka-San per an agreement, an existing agreement, with Alka-San. If you strip out that piece that includes Alka-San and really look solely at PWSA operations, our total budget for 2024 is $231 million. Looking at really just the specifics within our 2024 operating budget, and really just broad buckets of what is made up of all of our expenses, the largest piece is Alka-San. Again, that pass-through relationship represents about 30% of our budget. But the next largest component, which is really solely PWSA's obligation, is our debt service. That's just a mechanism that we use to fund our capital improvement plan, and that's something that will continue to grow as we take on more, you know, capital improvements over the coming years that are necessary to maintain our system. But I do want to point out that that's not unrealistic of a system of our size when you look at other utilities, other utilities using the same mechanisms that we are to fund their capital improvements and to really build upon their programs. The next piece that's representing 17% of our operating budget is repair and maintenance. You could think of this as chemicals, equipment, service restoration, inventory, those items that really help to maintain and repair our system on an operating side. So these are not improvements, per se, from a capital perspective, but really just that maintenance, you know, of our system. After that is human capital at 16% of our budget. Simply put, that's salary and benefits for PWSA employees. After that is business administration at 6%. That's utility costs for the authorities, so our electrical costs, our gas costs, insurance, office supplies, those types of functions there. And then the last component is our distribution system improvement charge at 3%. And these are our standalone charges on our bills to help cash fund capital improvements. The projects that these monies fund is approved by the PUC and can only be used by PWSA for certain projects specified under PUC order. If that is not the case, and for some reason we do not, you know, utilize those funds properly, we do have to refund those monies back to customers. So it's a very segregated charge on our bill, but it's like that for a reason, just to make sure that those funds are allocated and spent correctly. I'm just looking at some budget highlights, you know, overall, but really specifically keying in on our operating budget. I just presented on a very high level what was approved for 2024, and that budget has been approved by our board, will continue to strengthen the financial health of the organization. I do want to point out that April of this year, excuse me, of May of this year, Moody's Investor Services increased the outlook of PWSA to positive from stable. That's our bond rating, which is really just that third-party verification that, you know, PWSA does continue to trend in the right direction. And then in addition to that, late in 2022, S&amp;P also increased PWSA's bond rating from A to A+. Again, giving that upgrade, showing that positive trajectory from that standpoint. PWSA's budget does address a legacy of disinvestment. You know, year over year, as we continue to increase rates, we're utilizing those funds to really put that back into the system. So every dollar we collect is going back into the system, which is benefiting rate payers. That's our mindset. That's my mindset as Finance Director, and we will continue to do that, you know, over the coming years. PUC oversight and reporting requirements. We do have stringent requirements that the PUC puts upon PWSA. When I say stringent, I don't mean that from a negative standpoint. I think it's a good verification for the public to know that, you know, we do have certain reporting requirements we need to follow up on, to give that verification that we're spending funds accurately, we're spending funds the way we should, and all of our regulatory requirements are being met in addition to all of those other factors. So it's really that third-party standpoint, you know, for us to say we're doing the right thing is one thing, but it's for the PUC to say we're also, you know, verifying that that is correct is another thing. The last thing I want to point out is the budget approved for 2024 does meet all of our financial metrics. So there are some legal requirements. We talk about bond indentures such as our coverage ratios for our debt. That's being approved and satisfied in this budget, but also other increases to our cash, days' cash on hand, just other financial metrics also being strengthened and met in this budget for 2024.
And Ed, if you'll indulge me just for a moment, just to clarify, Ed did mention that we have a tentative settlement with the Public Utility Commission for the rates that we put in front of you. A component of that is the enhancement of the assistance programs that Jen mentioned. That's tied in that settlement. So this is what we expect will be available to customers beginning in February, but that's all pending approval.
Thanks, Will. All right, and with that, I'll turn it over to Kevin Paulus to talk about our capital improvement plan.
Thanks, Ed. Before hopping into some of the highlights of the 2024 through 2028 Capital Improvement Plan, we wanted to take this time to highlight some of the many accomplishments that we are happy to report on at the authority. So on the slide here, the top picture on the left, we secured a loan with the Water Infrastructure, Finance, and Innovation Act, grouped through the EPA earlier this year to fund a large portion of our water reliability projects that we highlighted earlier in this presentation. The middle picture depicts when we replaced our 10,000th lead line earlier this year, something that Jen spoke about a little bit earlier on, something that we were really excited. It's quite an accomplishment. I believe we're up to 10,700 lines at this point, and we look forward to continuing that work to meet our 2026 goal. The third picture on the top line is a new building on the premise of our water treatment plant property for storing chemicals. This was an important project for us at the treatment plant. When you talk about all of the chemicals that are involved in the treatment of water for customers, we want to make sure that we're storing those chemicals in a safe manner and comply with DEP requirements. So this project was something that we were happy to complete and are able to report back that, you know, we are in compliance with all of those standards. And then finally, the last picture on the slide is the replacement of one of the rising mains that supply the Highland, one of the Highland reservoirs. This project was part of the water reliability program. Again, this will help our system become more resilient, become more reliable for our customers, all while making those necessary investments that are part of the larger water reliability projects as a whole. This next slide illustrates some cost share projects that PWSA has partnered with the city and the city has partnered back with us to complete and are in the process of completing. As you can see on the top portion of the chart here, we are happy to report that we've completed four total stormwater projects: Nobles Lane, Winchester, Flurry Way. I'm not quite sure of the district numbers.
Yeah, we can get those for you, though.
Yeah, we can follow up and get those for you, for sure. So Nobles Lane, Winchester, Flurry Way, and Whitman Park. The next four or five that are in, are about to move forward with construction and design with Haverhill, Dragoon, Stewart Avenue, Braywater, and South Side Park. You know, we're extremely grateful for the partnership with you all to complete these really, really critical projects, and we look forward to completing and delivering Um, and we look forward to, uh, completing and, and delivering, uh, the five there on the, on the latter half of the chart. This next slide, uh, highlights our proposed 2024 through 2028 Capital Improvement Plan. Um, just one thing to note, uh, this plan, uh, will be proposed, uh, for adoption by our board at the December, uh, meeting in a week or two. Um, so if you look at the chart here, um, starting with 2024, uh, we are proposing a $184.5 million capital improvement program. Um, that number, uh, grows as we move through the plan to total about 1.7 billion over, over the course of the next five years. Um, one thing, uh, another thing I wanted to highlight, uh, on this slide, um, as you, as you move through the capital improvement program, you'll notice a spike, uh, in 2026. Um, a large portion of that is dedicated to our lead service line replacement program, um, and, and is critical to meeting the 2026 goal to be lead free. Um, and so included in this capital program is, um, projects that are, are various, uh, various list of improvements on our assets, uh, whether it be at the water treatment plant, some of our pumping stations, um, some of the annual programs such as the, uh, small and large, uh, water, um, small diameter and large diameter water main replacement programs, along with the large and small diameter, uh, sewer replacement programs. And to, uh, kind of round us out here, uh, talking about our financial stability, um, you know, the proposed five-year CIP, uh, is one that has, uh, diverse capital investment. Um, we talk about addressing a lot of those needs, um, that are for our customers and for our system. Um, those, this CIP, this proposed CIP will help us address that, will help us, um, maintain the program so that we can, um, get on more of a, a routine or, uh, maintenance schedule, if you will, um, so that we don't have to play years of catch-up. We're looking forward to, you know, improving the, and diversify our, our funding sources within the capital improvement program. I think if you, uh, look back at some, some historical CIPs, a lot of that, if not all of it, was funded by PWSA, uh, debt, debt dollars, um, which obviously have a trickle down effect to our customers through rates. Um, and so we are, you know, committed, uh, to securing low interest loans, um, like Director Barca mentioned with Penn Vest, uh, and WIFIA and, and other sources like that, um, so that we can, you know, alleviate some of that burden, um, in, in, in issue the, the debt on a, on a cheaper, on a cheaper rate than otherwise, uh, we would be able to. And then finally, um, all of this is supported by, uh, the strong credit rating of the PWSA. Director Barca mentioned it earlier, uh, in 2023, we were upgraded by Moody's, uh, for our outlook from stable to positive. Uh, in 2022, S and P increased our rating from, uh, or to A plus from A. Um, and, and a couple of, uh, factors that go into that, um, is just the responsible financial practices within the authority, um, increasing our days cash on hand, which is very similar to the, to the general fund that you are, are used to talking about, um, securing grants and low interest loans through, uh, multiple avenues to help deliver, to deliver our projects and, and fund our annual capital improvement pla- program. And at this time, I'll turn it over for any questions.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that we're joined by Councilwoman Strasburger, Councilwoman Warwick, Councilman Coghill, Councilwoman Smith. Is there anyone online that has joined us as well? Mr. McDevitt, do you see any council members? Again, I can't read that, that zoomed, it's too far away from me, but, so I don't believe we have any members online. I like to- And Councilwoman-elect Bob Charland, is in the audience? There he is. Hi, Bob. Um, I like to start with the council member that serves on the board, so I'll start with Councilwoman Strasburger, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm mostly going to defer to my colleagues because I'm sure they have more questions than I have. And in fact, a lot of the questions I wanted to ask for the public's benefit were answered in the presentation. I'll just note that, uh, the expenditures over the next five years for the Capital Improvement Plan are tremendous, clearly, and, um, some might ask, why is this necessary? Anything history has shown us that when we don't invest in our water system, we result in, um, being on the brink of catastrophic failures of our major systems, not having any redundancy built into the system so that if there were to be, God forbid, a cyber attack, any other attack, or some sort of failure of one system, there's no other way to actually get water to, um, you know, hundreds of thousands of, of customers and lead in our water. So, um, you know, it's unfortunate that we do have this compressed timeframe by which to, you know, meet these standards and, um, and do this work that probably should have occurred over the last 50 years, but I'm glad we're doing it now. And, you know, it makes for di- difficult decisions, but, um, also creative solutions when it comes to diversifying the funding streams that PWSA is getting, so it's not borne, uh, solely, um, by the, the ratepayers themselves. So I would just want to thank you for your presentation and thank you for your work. Um, and I'll defer to my colleagues for their questions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We'll go next to Councilwoman Warwick.
So, yeah, thank you for being here. Um, I appreciate it. I know that this is, just so folks know, this is you all coming here of your own, you know, as a, just sort of as a service to us, right? You don't have to be here like the other city departments. So that's, appreciate you coming and taking the time to put together such an in-depth presentation for us. That's helpful. I knew you were here recently, also for a post agenda, so I appreciate you coming to the table, you know, and, and explaining things to us. Um, yeah, I guess I just, um, and we talked about this earlier in the post agenda, but just a quick clarification. So for the, the bill discount and the customer assistance, for the ramp up of that, um, so for all of the services, are you actually, are, ju- just to clarify, you're reaching out? So if there, so let's say there's a customer who's just, you know, really racking up a bill and is maybe just of, of avoiding your calls. Are, are you actively trying to contact those folks to let them know?
Yeah, we do have remote meter monitoring. Our, our meters are smart in that way, so we can run reports for really high use or abnormal use, and we're proactively contacting those customers, especially if they are currently enrolled in one of our bill discount programs, so we know that they're low income. That's when we're doing that proactive outreach and maybe seeing if they are interested in the leak in, in conservation program that Jen touched on. So it, we do make outbound phone calls, especially if we see something abnormal or, or high in terms of the use.
Okay, and what about for folks who just are behind on their bill? Who may not be enrolled because they just don't know. Are, are you contacting them as well?
Yes, and, and it is one of our, what we call call scripting for our customer service representatives to ask about whether they are lower income or it would, you know, they'd be interested in availing themselves with that program. It's actually all something that we can do over the phone in that one conversation. So that is a required component if they're behind, is to see if they are eligible for the discount programs. Even if they aren't low income, they're eligible to get onto payment plans.
Okay, and, uh, I guess sort of as a follow-up, whether it be for renters or possibly folks who maybe are the head of household and maybe their income isn't, doesn't meet the requirements for just themselves, but maybe they have roommates or whatever who aren't on the, who aren't really on the radar but are living in the house and thus increasing the bill. Is there a way to kind of account for that?
Renters are eligible, even if the landlord is, is paying the bill on the, the renter's behalf. So it's based on the, the occupant's income. Um, I'd have to get back to you on the roommate question, um, but I, I don't know if we treat that as a household or not. I just, uh, would have to get back to you on that one.
Okay, okay. And so, but so for renters, they, they, they can be on the bill? Like the, the bill can be in the renter's name?
That's actually a newer, uh, feature at the beginning this year is that renters can hold the account, uh, whereas before it was typically held with, with the landlord. So that there's a communication that needs to happen between the landlord and the tenant for us to know that it's a tenant unoccupied, tenant occupied property, put it in the, the renter's name. But they now can, um, get the bill in their name, which would mean that they would get all of our materials about assistance programs and everything else that they're eligible for.
Okay, and otherwise it would go to the land, all, all that inform- Does the bill go to the landlord? If it's, if it's, if it's under the landlord's name, does the bill go to the landlord or?
Depending on how the tenant chooses to set up the account, oftentimes the bill will go almost as an FYI to the landlord and then the, the tenant will receive it. It's on them to pay it. Uh, ultimately, we have the ability to lean, so it's important for that landlord to be aware if there are unpaid balances associated with their property. Um, but there are also ways for the landlord to not see that bill if the tenant prefers not to disclose that information with the landlord. So, um, there's a lot more direct communication with tenants than we had in this last year. Um, but there, there does, there's a few forms that need to be filled out, which can be filled out electronically to, to set that up.
Okay, and then also just sort of last question on that. Is there, will PWSA reach out to help edu- so educate a landlord to say, hey, look, your tenant may be behind on the, on the water bill, but these, you know, give them this information, these are some things that can help them catch up?
I believe all of our standard communications have language directing, uh, them to, to see if they qualify for our low income assistance programs.
See if their tenants qualify.
Yeah, that they're, that the tenant would potentially be eligible for. And again, there are still flexible payment arrangements that are available regardless of income.
So, in essence, we're trying to make it pretty easy to pay your bill if you're behind on your bill, regardless of the income situation.
That's right.
Okay, great. Um, as far as the lead service line replacement, uh, I was at the, uh, I was at the celebration on Hazelwood Avenue of the 10,000. And I did want to ask, so because we have some traffic calming planned for Hazelwood Avenue, and is that, is Hazelwood Avenue, is it finished or is it soon to be finished?
If it is not finished, it's very close to be finished.
It's very close to being finished. Okay, good.
Yeah, we should be out of Hazelwood and, and on to other neighborhoods. We're doing our best to expend, uh, every cent that was available through the, the Arbigram.
Great, super. Um, and then, uh, so just, I'd be remiss if I didn't ask about it. I mean, I think I, I know the answer, but, um, is the Four Mile Run Stormwater Project? So there was 10 million that was coming from Alka-San that is no longer, that, that PWSA may be able to reapply for depending on the new design. So there was some green infrastructure that was eliminated from that project. And, um, I guess I just wanted to verify on the record with, with, you know, just for the public that that project is going forward regardless of the, of the Alka-San. I don't know if you want to speak to that?
Sure, so, and I, I believe the team is scheduled to, to provide you a briefing. Um, but for the public's benefit, the Four Mile Run Stormwater Project was originally proposed as a, a larger stormwater management, uh, initiative and actually a stream, um, a, a stream project, uh, in, in the park. And unfortunately, after years of effort, we were not able to get past the permitting stage from various agencies, Pennsylvania DEP, um, in addition, the, the CSX rail that runs through the park, we, we really just didn't make progress with them to be able to give us the access we need to, to construct. In addition, Panther Hollow Lake, um, is considered a dam, and so there was a separate series of permitting that were required for that project. So, um, kind of reaching that, uh, roadblock, we decided to reframe the project and see what we could do on a more neighborhood basis within Four Mile where the flooding and backups was most acute, and that's where sort of the re-scoped project is focused. Uh, we have been proceeding through design the last year and a half or so. Uh, and of course, as these projects, uh, get more refined, unfortunately, we've found a lot of conflicts underground that we know we're going to need to design through. So, uh, we're doing that due diligence now to make sure that when we commence the, the project, that we can actually construct and complete it and that it is effective. The stormwater project that was originally proposed, uh, may take shape at sort of after that neighborhood project is completed. Uh, we would want to do everything we can to avail ourselves of grant dollars, whether it be from the GROW program that Alka-San runs or other sources. So we, we do think there's still merit. Um, however, the originally proposed plan as designed, like I said, just we couldn't get through permitting.
Um, and then I did also, so, because you know, I, I live down there, so I'm very familiar. Uh, we actually have not had a flood down there in a number of years. And, um, I was wondering, because I know that the new outfall, the reconstructed outfall, which is very close to there, um, has there been any kind of measurement to see if maybe that reconstruction helped alleviate the problem in the run?
So I, I've asked a similar question, and, uh, it certainly didn't hurt, but due to the, the modeling that we can run, we don't believe it has resolved the issue.
Okay, we just haven't had a rain.
I, I think Mother Nature has been kind to us the last few years is really the, the short answer.
Okay, okay. Um, and then just sort of leading question about the green infrastructure is, um, just because I, I saw it in, in some of your projects here. Um, in 2024, the city, or we're, we're kind of embarking on a, uh, um, kind of a refurbishing of Lewis Playground in Hazelwood. And if there is any opportunity, you know, Whitman is like, I mean, that's gorgeous with all the stormwater things, and Lewis at the moment is very concrete, you know, very flat concrete space. So, um, I don't know if you would connect with Andrea Ketzlet, DPW, on that. We're having the first public meeting on December 12th, which is really just like a meet and let the community know that we're doing it and then getting any feedback. So I don't know if that would be an opportunity. We'd love extra, I mean, also it could be a help with the funding because it's a big playground. So if there was any way to make it nicer and bigger, that'd be great.
It, it may be already be on the team's radar, but if it's not, we'll certainly go back and make sure it is. Those are exactly the kind of opportunities we're looking to replicate, uh, like we did at Whitman.
Okay, super, great. Well, that, that's it for me, and thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
There we go. Thank you, Councilwoman. We'll go next to Councilman Coghill. Do we have any other members online? Thank you for checking.
Sort of depending the total bill, maybe, um, they have a series of rate increases, kind of not exactly in alignment with us.
So my point is, you know, back then, I kind of was like losing confidence at PWSA, and I didn't like the direction it's going in, but I will tell you, since then, I've been really impressed with your lead light, lead line replacement, your credit rating now. Um, so I think you've really come far away in the past four or five years, I guess. When, when did you really start aggressively doing lead line replacement?
Uh, probably 2018 was when the real program started.
You did that through the pandemic. I mean, you're at 10,700 now? That's incredible. How many more thousands do we have?
Well, it's, I wish I knew the exact answer, but we think we're more than halfway done. So we probably have about another 8,000 to replace.
That's incredible, yeah. So now, over the next five years, you'd probably be done.
Yeah.
What are you going to do with all that extra money? We're going to be saving.
We'll save it for the ratepayers.
I got a place for you to put it. So, no, so I really, really wanted to compliment you on, on the work that you've been doing. Um, you know, and most of you are, are ex-city employees, and I think that has a large part to do with it. We had a lot of talent that went over to PWSA, and it's showing now, I believe. I also wanted to thank you for the hardship grant, you know? Councilwoman Strasburger just pointed that out to me, something that my district can benefit from, which is really great. So I appreciate that. The reward for prompt payment, is that for people who are behind or owe from past due balances? And if they do, if they promptly pay for however many months it, it is, and they get a discount of $40, so it went from 30 to $40? I like that, I like that little perk. I'm always wanting to take advantage of like, whether it's to pay my taxes early or, you know, to, um, whatever the, the reduction is, so, so that's nice too. Um, I have one request, and I'm going to pull on Jennifer's heartstrings here, okay? Because she lives in Carrick, okay? I have a major, major problem. Nobody's taking responsibility for it. We talked about this, Will. And, and I'm not saying it's PWSA's responsibility necessarily, but we have an underground spring. Now, it is in a way because it's water runoff, storm runoff, well, not storm runoff. It's, I guess it's storm runoff because when it storms, it runs more fluid. But the problem is on Hornaday, Jennifer, okay? When you're coming on to Hornaday, there, it, it, there's a little bit of a s- slope there. And this underground spring is right there. And what it does is freeze up. It froze up yesterday. I got probably 15 calls yesterday. People are hitting their brakes and they're sliding right into Brownsville Road, and somebody is going to get injured or if not killed, you know? Um, and being that we don't, I think all of my district is served by Penn American at this point. I had a little piece in Mount Washington that I think has since, um, been redistricted out, so, so we're serviced by Penn American fully. Um, I had Penn American out there. I had Penn American out there. I had PWSA out there trying to figure something out. At the time, your engineer, I don't think he's any longer with us, but really, really good at what he did. I, I can't remember, Rick? Yeah, Rick. So, so he was really great. And the only thing he concluded was we'd have to tear up Brownsville Road and to the newest happen, which is like a half a mile away. And we're talking like millions of dollars to try to fix this leak. It's just, it's unbelievable. It's how much controversy this leak has caused for me. So I'm just pleading to you. I'm not an engineer, but surely something can be done. Rather than dig up Brownsville Road and make it a $4 million project, elevate the street, I don't know what could be done. But I'm trying to plead to you and your budget to come out and try to help me find a fix. For the people of Carrick, it really is. It's, um, it's been ongoing. This goes beyond before I was on city council. Nobody really is taking responsibility because it really isn't anybody's responsibility. If, if we can point to anything, it's the water runoff, which storm runoff, when it storms, it's more fluid and, you know, that's when it freezes up. And so, so can we please try to get somebody out there to try to figure something out? I, I don't know what to tell you. I, I don't, I don't have an answer. I don't have a, a method in my head to try to fix this, but, um, but, but that would be the only thing I ask of PWSA, okay? And done. I, rest of my terms, term, whatever, however long I'm here, I'll never ask of anything again. If you could solve this one problem for me or help solve it for me in one way, whether it be financial or an engineer can come out and try to think of something. I'm just really trying to get to the bottom of this. We're plagued by phone calls from this, this one leak. And I know you know it well, Jennifer, you know, so, uh, so, um, you know, that's my plea. Other than that, I'm really impressed with everything you've done up to this point. I have, you know, no questions or qualms about how you're, you've been operating. I see nothing but positive things, but please help me fix this problem in one way or in the other, okay?
We will definitely take another look at it. I know we've had several conversations with Domi and others to try to, to get to a solution that's reasonable. So.
Yeah, I don't know who we have to bring in, but let's just get our heads together and figure something out. There's got to be a, a less costly solution, I've got to believe. I just don't know what that is. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Coghill. And next we'll go to Councilwoman Smith.
Thank you. Actually, you saved, you saved their lives actually because you just pointed out that's one project might be in District Two. Let me just say, when you come to the table, I expect to see something from District Two, especially since the director lives there, number one. But Kevin was also born and raised there, so I'll keep that in mind. But anyway, um, but I do want to ask a little bit about the cooperation agreements and the city pools and the water for the city pools. And we no longer are serviced, you know, with free water. Now we have to pay for it. That was the PUC, right? Yes, we'll blame the PUC, right? No. So I'm just wondering how that differs from what's in the cooperation agreement. Does anybody know?
We're following the cooperation agreement, which was a phased in water rate for city properties. So in 2024, the city will pay 80% of the cost that we're assigning to all our other commercial or government entities.
And so when is that, how long is that cooperation agreement good for?
It's through, the cooperation agreement itself is through.
January 1st of 2025.
Oh, so it's, okay. So to me, that's important because it's also, I think, a reason why some of our pools, everyone says it's because of lifeguards. I'm starting to wonder if it's not because we're now paying for this water for some of the pools. And so for that reason, I'd like to, I'd like to understand a little bit better what we can do in, in terms of the cooperation agreement or city council in general. Other than the, uh, other than that, you are doing a really good job in a lot of things you're doing, but there's, I have, as you know, three issues with PWSA in my district. One was the trolley trail, which is now held up. I started that three years before or four years before I was ever elected. I've been in office since 2009. And every year, there's something new happens with this trolley trail, a new delay. With every administration, there's a new delay. I'll say that. So now I have another one and it's, and they're saying it's PWSA. And I'm going to talk to Councilwoman Strasburger about it because she advocates strongly for my district as well. So I'm going to make sure I talk to her about it first before I say much more. But I want you to know that that conversation is coming forward because the trolley trail is an issue. Banksville has been an issue for a long time, but one of the projects you're doing, the city cost share project is on Winchester, which is in Banksville. So you're, you're good with that. Marcel Newman also lives on that street from DPW. And the other one is the Banksville Road. So two of them were in Banksville. The other one in Banksville Road is the development that was held up because there was a big issue with the water line or water, whatever the pipe.
Large diameter sewer.
Right, yes. So those, those things are things that, so PWSA plays an important role in what happens in my district in terms of development, but yet most of our water comes from PA American. But in, in our district, and we even have some of Westview Water in our district, a small section of, I think it's Wind Gap. And so I, I'm just going to tell you, those are issues I want resolved. And if not, I'm going to call for my own post agenda and we're going to do some other things. But I'm going to talk to Councilwoman Strasburger about this. But I do want to thank you for the things you have been working on. I want to say your staff is very responsive, as you are, you are as well. That's it. I'm, I just want to look into the cooperation agreements for the pools and then talk to you about those issues with my district. Otherwise, I thank you for the work you're doing. I really wish there were to be a way that we can help more people with these water bills though, because people cannot afford them. And I mean, we're hearing a lot more complaints about the water bills and going up so much. Almost to, if you recall, there was a time when, before you got here, which is probably why you got here, is when city council, the Women's Caucus raised some concerns about the meters, the faulty meters and the lead in the water and things that started happening. And again, we're starting to receive some of those calls about the bills and we're wondering if there's any correlation. So I think Councilwoman Gross wants to elaborate a little bit on that. So I'll let that one go. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thanks.
Um, great. So I'll, I'll go and then I'll see if members have second round, but we also, just as a reminder, have Alka San waiting in chambers. Let's, let's do touch on, I guess, the middle two slides where we have the customer impacts with bill discounts versus the kind of residential customer impacts. And I do want to acknowledge and say thank you because it was a, I probably said the exact same thing last year, but it was a hard fight at the authority with City Treasurer Margaret Lanier and City Finance Director Paul Legger was serving as board chair to kind of put the customer assistance programs into place as we were even then raising rates. Rates are even higher now, but as we were understanding that these are going to be really hard for some customers to pay and that the people with the least means, we should make accommodation for. So that people, hopefully, customer categories are paying according to their capacity to pay. The PUC doesn't see things exactly that way, but we put those in place. Would you like re, like go back to those slides for us? I will confess that my household has been at the 5,000 gallon level, so we will be looking at going from $129 dollars or so a month up to $148 or so a month. And I'll have to have a conversation with my teenager in middle school, probably, but that's definitely the bill I've been getting. And we don't qualify for any of the customer discounts, but let's just kind of look and see, you are expanding the kind of income levels for customers. So let's just kind of go back and, and touch on that for me. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you for raising that. It's something we were proud to propose as part of the rate request of the Public Utility Commission. So as it stands right now, all of our assistance programs are based on households that are at or below 150% of the federal poverty level. And what we proposed and what was accepted in our settlement, we'll see if the, the commission accepts, is that we expand that from 150% to 200%. And we don't have really hard data, but it's, you know, intuitive that we're now broadening the eligibility base for the, the households that will be able to sign up for our programs when this hopefully goes into effect early next year. And that, again, it's not just for the monthly discount program. It's also based on that line repair and conservation program will increase the eligibility. The hardship cash assistance program as well will have the increased eligibility. So we're, we're kind of changing that threshold to get more of our customers' access to these various programs that we have in place. And we, we are, we have seen expansion year over year of customers who have been enrolled. So word is getting out. We didn't mention, we, we do have a program with Duke and Light to cross enroll. So that when they know they have a customer in our service territory that may be interested, they can transfer them over to our folks and we can get them enrolled. And then we're in an ongoing working group with the Public Utility Commission to create a universal application. And Councilwoman Gross, you may remember this is something Paul Legger talked about in many board meetings for some time, and it sounds like we are close to getting there, lowering the barrier of entry for any customer, you know, with a utility bill.
Lie heap, you know, you get your heating assistance and then you would not have to know, find out about and then enroll separately. You'd be automatically enrolled, so you'd get utility discounts across the board.
Exactly.
That's amazing. That's really amazing, finally, hopefully.
Yeah, hopefully we get there soon with the commission support.
Right. So I'm going to guess that 200% of the poverty line is roughly at about Pittsburgh AMI, 100% AMI. And, um, and that's good because I feel like you may be approaching almost probably not 50%, but maybe 40% of the people who are kind of below median income in the city of Pittsburgh. And so that's a healthy amount for residential customers. And again, revisit for me, if you're a renter, how does it work?
You are still eligible to apply. And now, um, this year, you're actually able to create and establish your own account without the landlord managing it.
Big, I know that that was just for the bookkeeping and the database is a problem before. And so that's really a huge hurdle. So again, for the public, we're talking bill discounts, but also possibly cash assistance. And then if you've got a broken water line, which is causing your high bills, you, there's line repair assistance.
Uh, yes, for exposed plumbing. So that's a, you know, a lot of the costly repairs sometimes are buried or under a foundation, something like that. That we can't cover, but this would be the, the leaking toilet, toilet, showerhead, um, you know, the running Pittsburgh potty that unfortunately many of us are familiar with.
Yes.
Self included. Uh, so we've already found that in those engagements with customers, we've been able to get them from the, you know, 5,000 gallon a month to the 3,000 or even lower by making those relatively low dollar investments on their behalf.
And that that, if you kind of lower your, those gallons, you can really lower your bills substantially by half practically. So that's all really, that's all really good news. I will say, again, just kind of going back in a time machine, when we did have a post agenda at this table about the, before this leadership team, the badly deployed, not very smart meters that behaved badly and caused really hundreds, if not thousands of our customers to be building correctly. And we were flooded with those calls here at council. Got rid of that old private corporation leadership team, got rid of, um, and, and got new leadership team that has kind of fixed those problems. But I have recently gotten some calls. And so I'll, I'll hope that they stay. We didn't get any calls, for the record, right? We didn't get any calls about problem water bills for several years. So thank you. Strangely had a bundle of them in the last month. So I know my staff has already kind of been in touch with you about them. I'm not sure that they're all the same problems. But it did, you know, having lived through it once before, I did kind of already kind of set up a red flag for myself. Um, and so we'll, we're definitely be in touch with you about those because we definitely want to know and catch it early if there is some bug in the system somewhere. So that's good. And I will also say that I'm glad to see these, I think they're all categorized as stormwater repairs. The Dragoon Way one especially being an area that where people's basements were flooding and it's a collaborative project. Could you kind of just elaborate a little bit more? I think you kind of went over it really quickly, kind of like, what do these all have in common? Like, why are they all on the same chart?
They're, I'll answer for you, Kevin, if you want to add, you can. They're, uh, they're all cost shares. So their, uh, majority of them are stormwater or green infrastructure projects. We're partnering with the city to, you know, maybe make improvements that they would want to make in that area. But we're also making our green infrastructure improvements at the same time and sharing the cost, which is alleviating increased costs for taxpayers or ratepayers. We're kind of just doing it all at once, getting it done at one time and really just being as efficient as possible.
Right. So we may be doing the curbing and degrading. Oh my gosh, that alley wasn't tilted right or it needed a lip, so it's not flooding the downhill neighbor. While at the same time, we're tearing it up and we're doing green infrastructure underneath at the same time, something like that. So.
Exactly.
You all are doing part and we're doing the other part. And then back to the cooperation agreements, I suspect that somebody at this table knows how much you billed us this year for water. How much did you bill the city of Pittsburgh for water in 2024? That's not in the slideshow.
Good follow-up, good follow-up.
Somebody knows. I knew Ed would know.
Yeah. I don't have the exact amounts. Uh, it's 80% in 2024, but we'll, I'll get you an estimate. We'll follow up with an estimate for, for exact amount.
That we billed in the past. How much did you already bill us for this year? 2023, do you know?
We, I don't know off the top of my head. I know that it's going to be paid through the cooperation payment at the end of the year, but I don't know the full amount.
Okay, you haven't billed us, we don't have an invoice yet?
So just a, just a point of clarification, we haven't billed the city per se anything yet. Um, we are in the process of pulling those costs for the end of year cooperation agreement. Um, we're hopeful that moving forward, we'll, we'll achieve consolidated billing. Because as I remember, uh, from my time here, there are quite a lot of, there are quite a number of accounts, uh, that, that the city holds. So consolidated billing is a very important initiative for us to provide you all to then bill on a monthly basis. But as of now, we wait until the end of the year till that co-op payment pulls those costs and combine them with other aspects of the, of the adopted co-op.
But there are meters where there are supposed to be meters.
Correct.
And there didn't used to be.
Correct.
But there are now. And so you can calculate that bill.
Yeah, absolutely.
Did you calculate it for 2022?
Yes.
Those meters were already in place for 2022 and that bill, do you remember what the 2022 bill was?
I don't, I don't know the number off the top of my head. We can follow.
Email our finance department and see, you know, or budget and see what did they pay? So it is really, it is a question. Again, we are bringing, especially because this is overlapped where we like shut all pools for a whole year. And then, so that's a significant amount of water that wouldn't have been billed.
Almost around the same time.
And now we're trying to bring the more pools back online, trying to get up to 100%. That's a lot of water, but we're fixing them so they're not leaking all day long, which is a good thing. And yeah, it'll be interesting to see, since there are separate meters on things, where is our water use? I, from the beginning, when we talked about the co-op agreement, I kept saying, the women's bathroom on the city council hallway has like, it feels like the whole wall is coming down, right? It's like 100 gallon tank in there. I don't know what's happening in that wall. It's like an original sized toilet. It is not like your low flow toilet at home. Well, we're about to have Alka San next. Everybody's blushing. I don't know why. But so this is part of the water use that we are not really talking, we should, we, you know, we try to get our consumers to conserve water and we have a lot of remediation that we could be doing at the city to conserve water. We, we talked about this with our other kind of corporate customers like the zoo, like, hey, you guys didn't use to get a bill and you're the zoo and aquarium and now you're going to be getting a water bill. So, you know, what kinds of water conservation tactics do you have, et cetera? So sorry to embarrass everybody, but again, we're moving on to Alka San. If customer, if, do council members have any more questions? Councilwoman?
Well, I'll just play off of what you were saying and say, you know, I, I hope that it's not money that forces us to reckon with this, but when it comes to anything from water use to electricity use, like the city county building is our major, major like white whale. So if, if it's, if it's paying for water or paying more for electricity that gets us to finally tackle all of the leaky windows and our leaky toilets and our pipes in this building, like, maybe that's the time to say, we know it's not the popular thing to do, but let's tackle this building to see cost savings down the line. So I hope that we can, we can do that. And, and, you know, maybe this is, this, this cop agreement going into full effect is the thing that spurs us to save taxpayer dollars down the line.
It is a long overdue. With that, I will say thank you to PWSA leadership. Councilwoman Warwick.
I just very quickly wanted to say, because I forgot to say before, uh, just how wonderful it's been working with Rachel Rampah. She is so fantastic. She just is so responsive and I just, I really appreciate it. So, you know, I know she, I think she's on vacation today, but at any rate.
We'll pass that along.
I just, I do want to add to that too. I just want to say your staff is one of the few staffs that respond day or night, anytime of the day or night, weekends, evening. They're just amazing. So thank you.
Thank you.
And they know it's me and they still answer.
They certainly know how to identify talent.
Yeah, they do. They definitely do.
So with that, I'll ask to say thank you, ask PWSA to leave the table and, and we'll ask Alka San to come up and join us. Thank you for waiting. And while you're getting situated, I'll have Mr. McDevitt give us a brief overview of
Hey, how are you, Jane? Thank you.
Of the Allegheny County Sanitary Authority.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The mission of Alka San, the, the authority authorized powers include, among others, the collection, transportation, treatment and disposal of sewage in Allegheny County and certain adjacent areas and the collection of tran- collection transportation. collection, transportation, treatment and disposal of such industrial waste as shall be acceptable to the authority within said territory. Quick overview, Alcasan has a seven member board, three appointed by the mayor of Pittsburgh, three appointed by Allegheny County Executive, and one joint city county appointee with, uh, each serving a five-year term. And Council President Cal Smith, you are on the board, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Is that all?
That, yes.
All right, getting situated here. I'll turn it over to Alcasan leadership next. Thank you. We can pass this down. So we, we have, the viewers have a presentation coming up on the screen. Councilmembers are just getting theirs in hard copy. Um, if you all, everybody from Alcasan wants to introduce themselves, then you can go straight into your presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Doug Jackson. I'm the Director of Operations and Maintenance as well as the Deputy Executive Director.
Hello, my name is Michelle Byes. I'm the Director of Environmental Compliance.
Good afternoon, I'm Kim Kennedy. I'm the Director of Engineering and Construction at Alcasan.
And I'm Jane Clark. I'm the Director of Environmental Compliance.
Just got to introduce yourself.
Thank you. Uh, good afternoon, I'm Karen Fantoni. I am the Director of Finance for Alcasan.
So Madam Chair, we are pleased to be here today, uh, representing our Executive Director, Arleta Scott-Williams. Uh, we will have Karen Fantoni go through Alcasan's 2024, um, draft budget. Um, it will be in front of our board later in December. We are pleased to also provide some input on the status of our clean water plan and the progress that we've made over the past year. Karen?
Right, thank you, Doug. Uh, thank you for having us here. It's always exciting to come to the city and get out here with the, with the big guys. You know, we're always stuck back there and, and the, in the plant, so it's nice to get a field trip once in a while. So again, thank you so much for having us. Um, again, we're going to talk a little bit about the draft 2024 capital and operating budget. We went through introductions already. So this process is a five-month process. We literally start working on the budget in August. So we close the books in August and we disseminate all the budget information internally. Um, and it's truly a collaborative effort from every division in the organization. Everybody has a say in what they think that that operating budget should look like. Um, so we meet, um, with the operating budget and in the capital budgets in, in October. We pull that information together and we do this also in conjunction with our consulting engineer, um, Hatch. They're also involved every step of the way and working with us with the budget. We then look at, um, what those numbers should look like. We look at where we are with our rate model. Um, we have, we're in the third year of our last rate resolution. So we had a five-year rate resolution back in 2022. So again, we're in the third year, so, so we're right in the middle, right in that sweet spot. Um, so then we do an internal review of that budget and then we have our consulting engineer who also does a review of that budget. We presented the draft budget to the, um, Board of Directors in November, the November board meeting. And then we will ask them to come back and we will hopefully have that approved in December. Our board, um, is, after it is approved by the board, we will get copies of the final, um, report to the trustee as is required by our trust indenture. We are required to have that to them before the end of the year so that we're in compliance with our bond. Um, some of the highlights for this year's budget is we have the 7% rate increase for 2024. Um, it also provides additional funding for self-capital. Um, we, as you heard from P W S A, we're, we fund most of our capital program with bonds. Um, and because of that, we are trying to fund as much as we can with capital that we save ourselves because it's cheaper. Um, so to the extent that we don't have to go out and borrow money, then that's less interest that we're having to spend. So there's less money that our ratepayers have to bear in order to provide that same level of capital. Um, this increases our clean water assistance program payment, which is what we have set aside to help those more vulnerable ratepayers that we have. So we're increasing this for the sixth year in a row. We're increasing it by $3 a quarter. We bill by quarter, not by month, um, which is a little different. So what we do is we ask that this rate look to fund approximately the first fourth gallons, 4,000 gallons of consumption a quarter. So it equates to about one month a quarter that they get, um, credit for. And that credit goes directly on their bill. It's not a cash payment to the recipient. It is something that goes as a credit rate on that sewage bill. It improves all our coverage ratios and our liquidity. Um, and it also, again, meets all the requirements of our trust indenture. So when we look at what is it that we actually need, what are our needs for 2024? So we have an, an operating budget, um, of about $121 million. Um, debt service is very consistent with last year. It's about 78 million. And that does also take into account, um, we are planning to go out into the market in the mid to 20, uh, 2024 for some additional bonds to fund the capital program. Um, and that is already taken into consideration there with that number. Our capital spending for 2024 is, is slightly more than 231 million and you will have, um, a chance to look at that capital program in detail here in a couple of slides. Um, and then again, we want to, uh, have some additional self-funding of capital for another almost $10 million that we hope that we can set aside, that we can use to fund additional capital. Total budget, both operating and capital for 2024 is just slightly higher than $440 million. So where do we get the money to fund that? It's mostly from our ratepayers. We have our special basic charges. We expect to, to get about 220, almost $230 million of that revenue from rates. Um, we have some interest income, which thank goodness the, the market has rebounded some, so the interest income isn't as anemic as it's been in the past. Um, we actually have had, um, pleasant interest income this past year. So we, we budgeted about $7 million more for 2024 than what we had budgeted for 2023 because the rates are up there. Um, right now we're earning a little more than five, almost five and a quarter percent right now on those money market accounts that we, we have in our, in our operating accounts. So when you look at our budget by division, um, so this kind of shows you, um, where we spend our money, the operating budget for the 121 million. Um, you can see here, um, basically where we're spending our money. It's through the interceptor system. The interceptor system is our regional system. So that's where we're going out there and I'm sure you've heard plenty about our regional, regionalization program, which is one of our pillars of the clean water program. Um, and so as we continue to expand and take over some of those regional sewers, those multi-ministerial lines, um, we have additional expenditures that we're going to have to allocate there because now we are responsible for the operation and maintenance of those lines. So we have additional staffing and, and whatnot to, to maintain those lines as well. Plant operations, plant maintenance, those line items have increased this year because we are under, you know, pressure. We've seen inflationary pressures, just like everybody else has seen post pandemic. Um, the cost of chemicals have gone up, the cost of utilities have gone up. And when you're looking at those types of, um, treatment facilities, those costs are excessive. They're a big part of what we need in order to maintain and operate the plant consistently. So we go into the clean water plan. This is our capital program. So we broke the capital program spending into a couple of different slides. On this presentation we started last year. So the first slide, I know it's really hard to read. It is the capital spending related to the clean water program. And one of the neat things to mention for this year's capital spending for this program is that this year is the first year that all the major components of that plan are actually included in the capital budget. So all that spending is actually being accounted for this year in that budget. So the next page of that capital spending is our organic capital, which is more or less the operation, the, the main, the, the maintenance that we have to do, the capital improvements that we do on the existing infrastructure that we already own. So this is things that we are doing outside of that clean water plan. And then we have on the next slide, some of the projects that we had completed in 2023. Um, you'll see some big milestones here as we approach 2025 and 2026. We will, we'll have some, some major milestones for the plant expansion will be completed in those years and we're very excited about that.
You have great eyes at Alcasan, apparently.
So I'm going to turn the presentation over to Kim Kennedy, our Director of Engineering and Construction, and she's going to talk about the top five projects that we have ongoing right now for 2024. Kim?
Thank you, Karen. See, so, um, what you, what you're, uh, what you're seeing here is what we forecast is our top five projects with respect to the spend. What's interesting is these are same five projects that were the top five line items for the 2023 budget. So, um, these are long projects. You know, we are in the middle of a major plant expansion. But we have to operate the plant 24/7 and maintain compliance. So we can't just go in there and shut things down. We have to do it carefully and systematically. So these are longer projects. But I do have a couple of slides to kind of just show you what we've been, um, what we've been doing down at the wastewater treatment plant. So the first one is the north end plant expansion. So this, this, um, this is our COVID project. We bid this, um, and awarded it in May of 2020 and our notice to proceed was in August of 2020. This, um, is a tremendous amount of work. This is complete, everything you see here is completely brand new, including the river wall that we started and finished first. That is a brand new chlorine contact tank that'll take our regular dry everyday flows up to 295 million gallons per day. And there'll be a new outfall all the way at the northern end of this picture that, that, that'll be our daily treatment process flow. And then the, um, final sedimentation tank is brand new. And then you can see the beginning, the footer of the chemical building. That'll house, uh, storage tanks for sodium hypochlorite and sodium bisulfite. So where, you know, it's $114 million, we're, um, almost 70% complete. Um, we've been, we've been at it out there at the north end for a couple of years, but we still have 2024 and half of 2025 before that project's done. Uh, the next one is our east headworks. If you come to board meetings, this is all the ruckus right outside of our boardroom. Uh, this is a, um, $89 million, uh, project at about 65% spent. But this is our, this will be our screenings and grit facility for when we begin to take on that increased flow. So, um, part of the consent decree, part of the plant expansion is to increase the capacity that we're able to treat. Get all of those flows that are currently being discharged to our rivers and streams, capture, convey them and get them to the plant for treatment. And this is the bones of what, what's going to happen when we are able to treat that flow. So this is the screenings and grit facility. Like I said, 65% complete and this will finish right before the north end for those 2025 consent decree deadlines. The next one is the environmental compliance facility, which we just started, uh, towards the end of 2022. This is a $32 million project, which is about halfway complete. This will be the, um, new home of our laboratory, industrial waste and biosolid staff. Uh, and you can kind of see to the left in the picture is a parking garage. So this used to be a surface parking lot at the plant. But as we really needed to be creative with our space, we built the parking garage, moved all of our union personnel. They park in that garage. And then the laboratory, the biosolids and industrial waste facility will, that'll open up next year. So this is one of the projects that we're going to be able to complete in 2024. And then last but not least of our fifth, um, largest spend component of our capital budget is the finishing up the design of the Ohio River Tunnel and putting that out to bid next year. This is the first phase of the regional tunnel system. This will, um, be just over five miles of 18-foot diameter tunnel. We are, we've passed the 60% design milestone. Um, we've got, uh, countless permits into countless different railroads and, um, agencies, including the city. Uh, and we look forward to, um, finalizing that design and preparing that project to bid, uh, by the third quarter of next year. So that's, that's our fifth biggest spend, um, line item on, uh, the 2024 proposed capital budget. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Karen.
Thanks, Kim. So, you know, everything that we talked about, all the good work that we're doing, wouldn't be possible without rate increases. I mean, we have to be able to afford it in some capacity. So what does that mean for our ratepayers? Um, so what it means for the 7% rate increase is going to cost the average ratepayer about $41 a year more. So, so it's, it's, it's a, it is an increase. It is an ask. Um, but we're trying to do, you know, a slow and steady approach here with the, with the 7% rate increases. So that way there's no major sticker shock. Um, but it is an ask, so it does, it's a, it's a $41 a year increase. So a last couple of slides and then we'll, we'll take some questions. Credit ratings, obviously credit rating is really important. When we talk about how much debt that we have and how much, um, you know, the debt service is 39% of our operating budget. It is, it's significant and it's going to continue to grow, um, as we continue to borrow money so that we can finance those cap, that capital program that we need to have. It's a robust program. So we're very fortunate that we are very strongly rated by the credit rating agencies. S and P upgraded the authority the last time we went out for bonds back in 2022. Um, they upgraded us to a double A1s with a stable outlook, um, from A+. So again, that was a, a nice bump that we had last, the last time we went out for bonds. And in the time before that, Moody's actually upgraded us to double A3 with a stable outlook. So that was upgraded and back in 2020. Um, like I said, we will be going back out. We'll be meeting again with the rating agencies here in 2024 and, you know, hopefully, hopefully optimistic, we'll, we'll continue that trend. We'll see, we'll see what they, what they have to say. Um, credit strengths that they note about the authority is that we have consistently strong financial statements. Um, they like the fact that we have the long-term rate plan. You know, those, those rate resolutions that go out, those multi-year rate resolutions are very well received, not only by our municipal customers, but also by the rating agencies. They like to be able to be able to plan ahead and look at what's happening. Um, they like the commitment that's there. Um, all our municipal customers are obligated until all the debt matures. So, um, we have those agreements that set up with our municipal customers and that is a, is a, is the backbone of the authority. Um, so we have an experienced man, management team and they like the flexibility that we were able to negotiate into the final consent decree. Some of the challenges that we have is just that the consent decree is substantial, both in terms of cost and scope. It's, it's a, it's a heavy haul. It's a heavy lift. It's a lot of work. Um, but, you know, we had taken some, you know, criticisms up until the time that we were not able to put shovels in the ground. But as you can see, based on those pictures, um, in the, in the conversation that, that Director Kennedy was able to share with you, we're clearly in the ground. We're, we are making major progress with that plant expansion and we hope to, to complete a lot of those projects, like I said, in 2025 and 2026. So, so we're, we're well underway with the plant expansion component. We're going to have substantial future debt issuances. So that is how we are funding the majority of the capital plan. It's going to be through bonds. Um, and so it's things that we're going to have to just continue to, to work very hard and maintain the budgets, maintain, you know, everything to make sure that we're hitting those targets. And that concludes our prepared presentation, our prepared comments, but we would be happy to take questions.
There we go. Um, I like to start as always with the member who serves on the board, so I'll defer to Councilwoman Smith. Would you like to go?
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to thank you all. You're just like P W S A, well-oiled machine. You have a great operation. You're the only people I know that get excited about wastewater treatment. When I go to every meeting, they're so excited and so happy. I'm thinking, what is wrong with this place? But I just want to thank you for the work you do. And I know that when you say something, I can, you know, trust that you're telling us um, the best, the best, um, information you have available to you. But, um, when you talk about the rate increases, is there any help for, I think I called about this before. Is there any help for ratepayers, assistance for ratepayers?
Yes, the, the Clean Water Assistance Fund provides, we're going to be writing starting in 2023. Now it's, right now it's at $42 a quarter. So, so for those folks that qualify for the program, which is based on 150% of the poverty level, federal poverty level.
Okay.
federal poverty level, you can apply for that program. Our program is administered through the Dollar Energy Fund. We don't administer it internally. So it is through that program, and you can apply, and you will get a grant. That grant will come on that bill. So those folks that are eligible will get a quarterly grant of $42, and then we're raising that up to $45 in January.
Thank you. I know I called about it before because I was concerned, because, you know, PWSA has theirs, but I thought that you had something at Alka-San, so thank you for that work on that. Because everybody comes to the table and says, our rates are only going up this much, but when you add them combined, that's a lot for people that are barely making ends meet today. So I'm appreciative of the extra help for the ratepayers. And for permits, I mean, are you having any difficulty getting the permits in the city or anything? Is there something, if there's something we can help with, please let us know, that's all I'll say. Or let the mayor's office know. I'm sure that they'd be happy to help.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, thank you all for your work. Jeanie, it's good to see you back. Oh, I don't know about that. Retirement's can't come fast enough. Thank you.
I forgot to mention for the record that we were joined by Councilwoman Warwick, who had to leave just a few minutes ago. We still have Councilwoman Erica Strasberger, Councilwoman Anthony Coghill, of course, President.
Can I just say real quick, I have to, we have a meeting starting about affordable housing with the ERA shortly, so if I get up and leave, that's where I am. But I try to watch on TV, but I got booted off yesterday. But anyway, but I expect you'll be treated with the same courtesy that PWSA was just treated. So thank you, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go next to Councilwoman Strasberger.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Council President for serving on the board. I don't have too much. I mean, the majority of the major capital projects you're working on affect everybody, but the construction will not affect my, you know, the district that I represent directly. So if you have questions about that, thank you for all of the support for stormwater improvement projects through the Grow Grant Program, many of which have touched the district that I represent, from Chatham University to Shadyside to Whitman Park. So, you know, we are seeing fewer flooding events in people's basements because of that investment, and we really appreciate it. How many staff are on Alka-San staff, roughly? I just have no idea. Like, is it approaching 400, like PWSA, or is it smaller?
Approximately 430.
Okay, okay. And so I'm sure it runs the gamut from, you know, engineers to planners to, you know, those who are laborers to, you know, everything, everything, kind of like we would imagine. And I have to say, this was my first year attending your open house with my son. We had a great time. Yes, apparently it's an institution I've been missing out on my whole time here. And, you know, it's such a great workforce development event as well, in addition to educating those who attend and children and having a fun time and a community-building event, and just, you know, seeing the site itself and opening it up to public eyes who are interested, sparking that interest at a young age. And I know that you have, like, take-home educational programs that you initiated during the pandemic, that you've kept up, and camps, and, you know, so I'd love to hear a little bit more about your workforce development efforts and, you know, what opportunities there might be for us to continue to build homegrown, great homegrown jobs here in this field, in these fields.
Right, so all of that vision really starts with our Executive Director. You know, that certainly has aided us over the years with the stability of the organization that we are. It was her vision for Open House. It was her vision with a branch of our organization, scholastic outreach, kind of going to the children to get to the parents. So from an educational perspective, there is a portion of our workforce that is, they are dedicated teachers that are out there reaching out to the school districts, whether or not it's virtually, or whether or not it's in person, whether or not it's through summer camps that we house, whether or not it's through the school visits that we have non-COVID, where folks come and get educated on the process itself. From a workforce development perspective, at least internally for us organizationally, we do have our own apprenticeship program, where we develop those employees that come in as custodians. So I'll speak on behalf of myself, being the director that has the largest amount of employees, about 170, are part of the O&amp;M group, and the majority of them come to us as custodians with a variety of different background skills. I will say that many more have come with a different skill set than perhaps in the past, but we provide them a path to become an electrician, a welder, carpenter, lubrication mechanic, HVAC technician, all through the development of the employees that we have coming to us. And the need is there. So we've had large turnover of employment through retirement, through attrition, through just the bargaining unit staff going from place to place. So finding those skilled craftsmen that we need, keep in mind, those are doing the day-to-day maintenance of the facility, the organic work that Karen referred to. All of the capital work is all done by third-party outside contractors, not necessarily authority personnel. So hopefully that answered at least part of the question.
Yeah, great to hear that you have an apprenticeship program, and, you know, I'm sure, always looking for creative ways to continue to expand. The one thing I mentioned to PWSA at a different forum, and so it's not to play favorites, I want to mention to you now, that I think you might be able to look into taking advantage of if you haven't already, is the Federal Climate Conservation Corps, to the extent that it might impact, you know, that you might be able to take advantage of that as well, kind of similar to the 1930s Civilian Conservation Corps that placed people all across the country, building our trails and walls and bridges and infrastructure, like, it's, they're being deployed all over the country in a different way, so.
Thank you.
Who knows, might be a, might be a new way to find a pipeline of new talent, so. But no, thank you for your presentation, all the work that you're doing, and, you know, it's very clear to me, and I understand why there's a need for an increase in the rates, and, you know, glad to learn a little bit more about the ins and outs today. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Coghill?
Thank you. Thank you for being here. I just have a few questions. You know, the 7% increase, what is your, when was your last increase?
We've done annual increases of 7% pretty much every year.
Across the board, yes. So PUC has to approve this?
No, we are not regulated by the PUC.
Okay, yeah, okay. So 7% is the norm?
Right now, we've been doing 7%. The last, we did, this was a five-year rate resolution that was adopted by the board in 2022 that covers 2023 out through 2026. So before that, we had a four-year rate resolution, and that was 7.5% and then 7%. So it's been, it's been annual increases of about 7% for a number of years.
Okay, okay, so that's kind of standard.
If I could, so they are, so our rates right now and our increases are less than, as we, back in 2012 and '13, submitted our wet weather plan, the projections of rate increases were measurably higher than the ones that we're actually experiencing today due to a variety of different factors, economic, climate. There have been a variety of things that contributed to rate increases that are actually lower than what was once thought was going to be necessary back in 2013. So we're on a positive note, appreciative of the rates not being as high as what was expected for our federal consent decree compliance.
I wanted to know, you know, I know many of your employees from my neighborhood and just, you know, friends, they're all happy. Everybody likes working for PWSA. Yeah, it's something good going on, in a good way, because not only are people fighting to try to get a referral from me, in which way, which I don't, but, yeah, you know, everybody, yeah, I'll bet, I'll bet, I'll bet, I'll refer them to you, okay? So just talk to me a little bit about, you know, the 18-foot diameter tunnel, right? Major, major work. This goes underneath the river, correct?
Correct.
So is this replacing a current underneath-the-river line?
Yep, so I'll spend a minute talking about existing infrastructure, and then I'll let Kim talk a little bit about the new infrastructure. So most folks don't realize that, you know, right now, what feeds our treatment plant on the north side is a 10.5-foot diameter pipe that's 100 feet below the ground, that services the majority of the 310 square miles that Alka-San provides wastewater treatment for. That being constructed many decades ago in times that were a little bit more challenging and, you know, more drill-and-blast than perhaps some of the newer techniques that are out there today. So that existing infrastructure is what collects all the wastewater from the region. Again, 100 and some feet below the ground, constructed 60, 70 years ago. So in order for us to comply with our federal consent decree, there's a requirement to bring additional flows to the treatment plant. That existing infrastructure isn't large enough, so one of the largest pillars of our Clean Water Plan, which is our tunnel construction, is what Kim touched on a little bit with regard to design, and I'll let her speak a little bit more to what the construction will also look like.
So it will not replace any of our existing infrastructure. Our existing infrastructure will operate forever the way it does today. It'll capture and convey the dry weather flows. What the new tunnel will be is for the wet weather. So that, right now, we have combined in sanitary sewer overflows during wet weather. If those points of discharge, we'll capture it, turn it, and drop it down into the drop shaft, and then that's how it gets into the tunnel. So it'll stop going and polluting our rivers and streams, and it'll be able to be conveyed to the plant for treatment. So as part of the plant expansion, the last project is a pump station, because at the end of the Ohio River Tunnel, there'll be a pump station that'll lift the flows up and start them as part of the treatment process. So when you look at that tunnel routing in that photo, it's all 150 feet below grade. Now, there are six sites in the city as part of the Ohio River Tunnel where there'll be a near-surface facility, and what we mean by that is we mean the regulator that diverts it, and then the sewer that'll get it over to the drop shaft and a drop shaft. So those are our near-surface packages, but the bulk of it is, you know, it'll be, it'll never be seen, right? And then it'll just clean the rivers and streams by being able to capture and convey that flow during wet weather.
Right, thank you, Kim. And the 150-foot buried 10.5-foot line?
Existing.
Is that, that's not under the river? That's?
Well under the river.
It is under the river?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
There are several river crossings that it goes underneath the river, so that existing infrastructure has been there, you know, since we went online in 1959.
And the 18-foot new line that we're putting in tunnel, that we're tunneling earlier is what it is, how many years will that last before we have to do it again? Hundreds?
Hundreds. I mean, it's.
That's good to hear, yeah, right. It's not something we want to do every 20 or 30 years, that's for sure.
So this tunnel will be a little bit different. So this tunnel on dry weather days will be an empty tunnel. So access to it for whatever routine maintenance may be necessary is a little bit easier than our existing tunnel, which has never been taken out of service, does get periodic cleaning and inspection, so it will be a little bit different system.
Probably almost drive vehicles in it, right?
That is correct.
Right, yeah, so, that's great.
I don't know if you'd want to.
And the plant expansion, is that part of the, is that expansion in coordination with the 18-foot diameter tunnel that we're putting in, or is it just?
It is, yes.
Okay, so they go together. Thank you, Jean. It says it all, right, right. Okay, yeah, that's what I figured. Yeah, the only other thing was, you know, you said you're going to be taking out bonds again. How long do you float a bond for, 30 years usually?
30 years. Traditionally, we do 30 years. There has been some discussion and maybe looking to take them out a little longer as we try to match the life of the bonds, you know, when we're, you're financing tunnels, you know, when we get to the financing of the tunnels, the tunnel's useful life is going to be well in excess of that 30 years. There could be some bonds, you know, that go out beyond 30, but traditionally we're 30 years. We do not have anything on the books beyond 30 years.
Got it, yeah, yeah. And that's really it for me, so I just, I'm just interested. I'll admit, I haven't toured the plant. You know, John Weinstein has been trying to get me down there for years, and I just haven't made the effort yet, but I will, and I'm looking forward to seeing.
I just wanted to mention something to you, Representative, Councilwoman Comstock. I dropped off a packet for you last week that gives you all the stuff on the tunnel, et cetera, and I'll be happy to talk to you some more about that, because we love talking about sewers. We'll do it over meals.
You know, I'm lucky enough I do, too.
And our employees really don't come for jobs, they come for careers. A lot of them start at the very beginning of their career, and they stay there.
Yeah, no doubt. I find that, they're all long-tended people.
We do have to change the hiring process, though, I think. I do think so. It's too political, it is.
We also work with the A. Philip Randolph Institute and other veterans organizations in order to make sure that we're reaching the entire community in hiring.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you, and it's because I always call you by your first name that I screw up your last name.
You can call me by my first name here.
We call by a lot of names.
Yeah, it's better than what they usually call me, right? Okay, now, thanks again, I appreciate the work you do.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
I know you are.
I appreciate all the presentations. We've been here a long time, and I appreciate your waiting, and we do have another meeting to move on to, so I'm going to wave any questions I have. If I need to email you, I could do that. I appreciate the presentation. One thing I will just say, Madam President, while you're here, is that our legislative database isn't attaching these presentations. So you could, like, watch the video to see slideshows, but it would be nice to attach the PDFs, and I've talked to the clerk office about that a little bit. We may have to read them into the record separately, or they were going to work on something. I always like for the public to have the same attachments that we have. So I had been slipping my mind into this point, so.
That's a great idea.
Also, I've been forgetting, and to remind all of our authorities, that we, you are required to submit a salary report by name.
They actually do.
And you probably do.
They actually do. Alka-San actually follows all the rules we're supposed to follow, okay?
Fantastic, I appreciate that, and you can just work with our Budget Office if it isn't already submitted, so. That's it. With that, since we do have council members, I will ask for a motion to recess.
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.